He's busy with another school-related commitment for a few moments. And we're going to get to the point of approve our agenda, but we may adjust it a little bit on the fly just to accommodate Mr. Donovan. So before we call it to order, I will reiterate last meeting's tradition and it's hoped to make it a regular deal by reiterating the vision and mission of the School District of Milton. And of course, if you remember, our vision is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And our mission and the way we carry that out is the School District of Milton, in partnership with the community, prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And with that, we will call it ordered. The Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 13th. And please join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as I mentioned, we don't have any changes to the agenda, so we'll approve it in the fashion you see it, or hopefully we will.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Dave, seconded by Rick to approve our agenda. Questions on it? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. Minutes are next. They are included in board docs, per usual.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on February 27th, 2023.
Thank you. That motion was from Mike, seconded by Dave, to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any questions on those? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Vouchers are also included in board docs.
I'll make a motion to approve general checking account vouchers, totaling $822,719.19 as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. That motion was from Mike, seconded by Dave, to approve our general checking account vouchers in the amount that he just enumerated. Any questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Much? Student Council, welcome, Holly.
Hello.
We missed you.
So currently, Student Council is focusing most on prom. It's quick and approaching next month. But besides that, we're currently working on finalizing plans for our upcoming field trip and are promoting a green t-shirt. Bethel, thank you and have a wonderful night.
Do you know what's the date on prom?
I do not have that memorized.
Okay. Very good. I still got time to find my date.
Yes.
Where's the field trip to?
Um, we're trying to go to a prison to understand how this is done.
Oh, interesting. All right, very good. Thank you for that. We always love hearing from the Student Council and what the kids at the high school are up to. Public comment, when I looked, I'm going to take a quick peek, but I don't think anyone signed up. And if not, we will move past it. And I do not have anyone for public comment. And Rich's card is next. We're going to let him come back to that when Rich is able to join us. So I will jump past it. Three on the agenda is a joint HR and Finance Committee report for a meeting that we had last week. So, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. On March 8, 2023, the Joint Finance and HR meeting met with key benefit concepts to review whether restructuring post-employment benefits. Similar to our meeting on February 15th, this meeting continued to focus on the following items: Review of post-employment benefit plan. Examine the current post-employment benefit costs. Explore post-employment benefit options, including a tiered approach, and review of projected cash flows and costs related to both have options. We will be looking to plan our next joint meeting on April 5th, 2023 at 8:00 AM. Chris, did you anything to add to that?
Nothing else to say.
Or Carrie? Any questions or comments on that? That's it for that.
Very good. Thank you much. You still have the stage, Rick. We're going to jump to the Policy Committee.
Okay.
Committee meeting.
I'm sorry. All right. Thank you. Policy committee met last week on March 8th. First on the agenda was the first reading of the NiOVA and other policy updates. The list of policies is included in board docs. Some highlights of updated policies include 2260.02, which has updated language regarding when an English learner will be considered proficient in English. Policy 2451, program or curriculum modification, contains language regarding how parents may request changes to their student's program of study in order to allow their child to be successful in schools such as enrolling in an alternative school or homebound study. 3112, board staff communications now contains language that ensures that job-related communications from staff will be done through the district administrator. This policy also includes language that states that board members and staff will oftentimes meet at many different occasions or functions and will very likely informally discuss what is going on in the district. Policy 8510, wellness, had a very large rewrite. This contains a lot of different information, such as school meals offered, nutrition education, encouraging physical activity, and staff wellness. Did anyone have any questions or comments on the policies? Just to reiterate, that was just a partial list of the actual list. Those are just highlights.
Yep.
Okay, the list is included in board docs. Anything else? Okay, and moving on is discussion on possible approval of adoption of the second reading of the NiOVA policy updates. That list is included again in board docs and has been brought to the board previously. Did anyone have any questions or comments on any of those? Just one thing I did want to bring to the full board, something we talked about at the committee level, was the way we're doing this now, we go over first readings and break the first reading and the second readings to the full board. But now what we're going to do is the second readings will not go back to the committee. They will come back to the full board for approval. They can get done faster and more quickly. Any questions on that or any of the second readings? If no, I will make a motion to approve and adopt the policy updates as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by John, to approve the policy updates that are discussed and included in board docs. Questions on the motion or the policies? I see none. All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you, Rick. That motion clearly passes. All right, we're going to run out of agenda before Mr. Donovan gets back, but we'll do it again. New business. A, discussion and possible action on early college credit program and start college now for 2022, '23. And I see Mr. Sveback making his way to the podium, so we'll assume he's standing in for Mr. Billhorn. Welcome, Jeff.
Yeah, so we just wanted to pass along that these approvals are consistent with approvals of the past. Nothing has changed in. The courses offered really proves that again. So it's about as good as I can give you yet. As far as an explanation of why they're on. You can ask if you have any more questions.
Just a quick question. I was going to add the list of courses. And am I understanding right? UW-Wilewater accepts our general chemistry class as a five-credit transfer?
I don't know.
Answer that question. That's pretty impressive.
Is that what they're taking in class there for five credits?
Right. They're actually going to.
Oh, yeah. So here's what I can answer. So these are our students going to these institutions to get.
Got it.
So you know, if a student is approved to go to either the Wilwaters, we do not offer that class at no other high school.
Got it. Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I was going to mention, of course, that list is in board docs. It shows exactly which classes. Doesn't identify the students. They're just a number, of course, down the side. And we will disanact an item, so if you're of a mind to, we need to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the early college credit program and start college now applications for 2023, '24 presented.
Okay.
Thank you. That motion from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the early college credit program and start college now applications as presented. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And now I think something that you are a little more familiar with. We'll go to a discussion and possible action on the girls' hockey co-op program. Jeff?
Yeah, so we got two. We do our annual co-op kind of renewals every year that needs an action item. Our first one is our girls' hockey co-op, which our host school is Beloit Memorial. There is that document there. I'm not going to read every single school that's now involved in this. It's different because we have added Hanegha and W to part of our school that's just a part of this co-op now. So hockey co-ops are two-year deals. So this is, we just finished up the second year of our hockey co-op and this is the review of the future. We've been a longstanding member of the Rock Company Fury Girls Hockey Program.
Just have a question. When Beloit are getting farther and illimined, they don't have the trail there for practice, do they?
So, no, Rex is in Beloit typically. I think they have mostly in Beloit and some ice time in Houston.
Jeff, we adding two more schools?
Yeah.
Is our price reduced?
Yeah, so this co-op runs through Beloit. Every school kind of does it a little differently. At the back end, they basically take the running bill and they split it by every girl that's involved. So if we had three girls, we pay three shares, if you will, if that's all split evenly. So it will reduce our cost, the more girls participate. I will say that the last couple of years, participation has been way down. We're like 12 to 13 girls this past season. They're highly successful, really have really low numbers. But the more, and this is kind of unfortunate, they're surrounding girls hockey. This is survival, to keep these teams going, to provide more opportunities for kids. So we're hoping with this, they'll get that number from like 12 to 13 to 20. That's kind of how it projects out, which is just better for them.
I'm assuming then with limited numbers, it's a varsity-only type of a program?
It has been, yeah. I think if you're going to run a JV team for hockey Friday, 25, you know, over 20 for sure. So it'll still be varsity only until they hit that kind of threshold. We'll have that JV team.
I know it says they're in the Badger Conference, but looking at the number of schools it takes to make one team, who do they play? Can't be that many.
Um, so, yeah. There's very few standalone girls' hockey programs. Most of them now are co-ops in some regard. Which is all up north where that's kind of hockey country. So there's like a Madison, the Gulf of Metro Lakes. Every Madison school is one team. There's the Icebergs, which turns out is still, that's another co-op. So there's no real traditional Badger Conference. It is, it falls under kind of our purview as a conference, but it's a bunch of cooperative group of schools that play each other.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, '24 girls' hockey co-op program.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Shelley, to approve the girls' hockey co-op. Any questions on it? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And another co-op, Jeff?
The next one is gymnastics. Now gymnastics, co-ops have to be renewed every year. I don't know why that's different, but that's the way for you. I have a longstanding co-op with Egerton. It goes back many, many years. Just ask you to kind of re-up that as well. So not a whole lot to talk about that. It's status quo that kind of has been for that program.
I would move to approve the 2023, '24 girls' gymnastics co-op program.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Dave, seconded by Shelley, to approve the gymnastics co-op. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Well, I'm going to bump down. We'll take care of a little more business while we're waiting for Rich, because we have some agenda items that we need his input. We'll go down to miscellaneous. Staffing report is included in board docs. Make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
Second.
Motion from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to approve our staffing report. Are there any questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And one more piece we can tackle, gifts and donations.
I would move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Second.
Thank you. Dave's motion, seconded by John, is to approve our gifts and donations with the gratitude of the district, as usual. Questions on gifts? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jennifer. I am hopscotching around and I missed something we could be doing. E on, oh, our new business is a presentation that I presume will take us long enough to get Rich back in the house. We have a teaching and learning and student services data update from Ryan and Julia. So if they want to make their way up, I know this has a PowerPoint with it. Do you, I better pause a moment. Do you want Rich here for any background, support work on data or anything?
We can move on.
Okay.
Our building level, Edman here as well to support.
Because my inclination was to call a little recess until Rich is able to rejoin us, so I'll give you guys the option.
I think we can move forward.
Yeah, we don't need to. Go ahead, Ryan.
Well, thank you very much. So today, we're going to share some IREDDY ball to winter updates. Julie's going to come up and share some of our around fall to winter updates as well. And even more importantly, we have some Bill and Edman here who are going to talk about that data and how we're responding to the data and some of the things that are happening within schools. So what I'll provide is kind of a high level from a district for, from a K8 and K12 perspective. We'll dig a little bit into some of the specific level data, but we want to make sure we have more than enough time to really look at and hear from the Bill and Edman. Here are some of the things that we're doing that we're seeing some success with with the students. As we look at that first slide, I also want to highlight, and I'll be your best, you should have a sticker with our approach of our red house. We are really wanting to make sure that we connect everything we do back to our program of graduates here in Milton. So again, as we talk about data, as we talk about all the good things we're doing, we always want to be thinking through that lines with the characteristics that we want in all of our graduates and all of our red houses. Okay. So I'm going to focus on IREDDY diagnostic growth, and we're going to look at some national norms and some benchmarks as it compares us here in Milton. And before we jump into the first graph, and I'm not sure that we've shared this specific graph with the board before, but one of the, IREDDY gives us all kinds of data. And some of the graphs and some of the data is really great for our classroom instruction. Some of it's really great for our building goals. And it's also good to look at from the district plans and kind of how we're comparing to some of the national averages or state norms. One that Baby and I already just kind of started this year was a performance and growth chart. And what this is, is a vitamin B4 difference. So on the horizontal axis, we have how our students are doing performance-wise against the national norm. And then on the vertical axis, how our students are growing based on that norm score against the national as well. Obviously, the goal is to be a high-performance and a high-growth school. So we want to see all of our, we want to see all of our students, we want to see all of our classrooms, our grade levels, and our schools within that top right quadrant of high-performance and high-growth. And what we also want to see is, not only in that quadrant, but we want to see movement up to the top right corner of that quadrant as well. So that is the goal with that. So with that, we're going to jump first into our reading scores. And as we look at our reading diagnostic, really excited and proud to see that all of our schools are in that high-performance and high-growth quadrant. So we're really proud of that and excited to see that. And that's testament to a lot of the great work that our teachers and our principals have done for the students. Also want to point out, the schools that are at the top of that quadrant, at the top of that chart in that quadrant, have the highest growth. And the schools at the farthest to the right have the highest performance in that quadrant. So that's how we're, that's how we're looking at that.
Question, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
The growth number, is that just from the previous data set that we've measured? Or is that, does the growth look at a longer period of time?
That's from the previous data set that we saw, from fall to winter. Again, that's also normal against the national. When we take, when we take that to the grade level, we can also look at which grade levels are performing in the quadrants. And all of our schools are in high growth, with the vast majority of them being in high growth and high performance. So obviously, there's going to be little differences within every group. And another thing that we look at is our performance overall from grade level to grade level. So yes, we look at all this data in 2022 into 2023, but the other thing that we can do is then look at historic data. Okay, how did our seventh graders perform last year or sixth graders? And we can go back into old data to try to look at grade level cohorts as they're moving forward as well. So this is obviously just looking at each grade level separately, how they did from fall to winter. Don't want to point out too many specific grade levels, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't point out fifth grade there at the top. The road that they showed was absolutely amazing ingredient. So that is definitely one that we would have been seeing.
Ryan, a question. I know you said this is relative to the national norm. If I remember right, this is national norm of folks who are using IREDDY. Is that right?
Correct.
How many schools practically are in that group again?
That'd be a good question. That would be something I could find out to see how many students had taken the IREDDY exam this year. And we could dig into it and find that information. I don't have it.
Okay.
I do know that IREDDY is the screener used in Wisconsin right now. So it has overtaken STAR and MAPS. It's kind of the other two major screeners. But we're not required to tell the state which we use. So the state can't tell us exactly how many are using this and how many that. We have to go directly to the source of it. I don't have any students.
Okay.
This is a chart that you've seen before as well. So breaking down reading in terms of how we're doing, this is a K8 graph, so this is all of our students within IREDDY. If you notice, the far right is how our students did in the winter. Right next to that is how our students did in the fall. So you can see how they grew. And we talked about this before as well. Our overall goal is to grow that green and strength the yellow and red. And that's really simple terms. But really, that's one of the great things about this graph, is it just really visualizes that information. So that being ultimate goal, then we dive deeper into that red and dive deeper into that yellow. And then we attach the basis to those numbers and figure out, okay, how are we going to move, Ryan? How are we going to move those students forward into that X category? It's pretty exciting to see our students are performing the state and the national average out within K8 reading. And if you look national, it's still below the 18, 19 norms. But in Wisconsin, in our state, our reading is back above or back right about to the 18, 19, 19 level.
Ryan, the green bars, obviously the darkest green, right at the top of the bar, that says mid-on grade level. Does that also include our sort of overachieving students or our high achievers?
Yes.
Okay. And then the light green bar, when it says early, that translate that? What's that showing us?
So that would be an eighth grader that is early in their eighth grade standards.
Okay.
So they're not quite on grade level, but they're early on grade level. And we want to move them fully into the grade to be at grade level before the end of the year.
Okay.
So Ryan, the, so the graph for Milton Fall and Milton Winter, the target is the same, right? It's moving towards the target, but the target itself doesn't change though. This is where you should have been in the center of it. Here's where we hope you are in May, can it be right? The target is flat for both of those? Is that right?
And yeah, I think I understand your question. It would be yes. That part doesn't change here.
Right.
I think, I was going to ask the same question in a different manner. So for instance, if you said eighth grade reading, they have a target in the fall. Is it the same target in the winter? Such that we would assume more kids are teeming that or progressing toward that when we measure two different parts of the school year?
Yeah. Because IREDDY is normed on the standard already.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons we went to it. We thought it was a better connection to the board exam and better prepare our students. So with some of the other screeners out there, they're renormed every year. So you might have a year that maybe the overall, the national is down or the state's down, and you're not. And it's like, hey, look at how amazing we are. But that's because they re-norm.
Gotcha.
That is not part of what I.
Is there another test before the end of the year?
We do IREDDY again in the spring.
Okay.
All right.
Now I'm not going to spend as much time on the specific levels here. Again, our principals will kind of speak to some of the things they're doing around the data overall. Again, we're feeling pretty good with where we're at for reading, especially seeing that we implemented some new resources K8 overall. As we look at the K3 numbers, we see some really, really good growth from fall to winter. Seeing a lot of growing of that green, if you will. And definitely want to highlight third grade, who made some big jumps with the data. And even when you look at, they had a little substance like red that they started the year, did some good job with their interventions and figuring out how to lead kids to where they're at. Again, they will speak a little bit more to that later. So as you look at four through six at Northside, when I again highlight that fifth grade, the growth overall, our students here are outperforming Wisconsin, outperforming the national as well. So our goal is always to be better than that state and national average and also keep ahead of that historical norm as well. As we get to seventh and eighth, some same numbers. Looking at seventh grade, want to definitely highlight their growth when we look at how they started in the fall. They did a good job of decreasing the red. They're really moving a lot of students into that dark green, into the on-grade level. So pretty excited about their efforts.
Ryan, as we progress through the grade levels, the level of red and pink seem to jump up quite a bit in grade seven and eight.
Yeah.
In grade eight, the winter, 23, reading actually progressed a little bit in certain respects. I don't, I don't know why that is. I guess, any theories as to why, you know, things seem to be going well and then there's a bit of regression relative to the state and the national averages? Any theories there?
Well, you definitely see a little less red in those early grade levels, right? Because we're talking below grade level. So actually, you can see less of that. You know, when we start to look at middle school and high school data right now, I think you're seeing some, we are seeing some trends nationwide, statewide and nationwide. And we're hearing a lot around engagement. And again, that's not a, that is not a point the fingers in any stretch of the imagination. But as we talk with our colleagues around Wisconsin and whether it be teaching colleagues or CNI colleagues, we're hearing a lot about engagement in the second year program. I think there's a ton of reasons that we could go into there. But it is definitely something that we're seeing all over. I would say overall, one of the reasons I think we'd give point to is, is we, actually, let me reverse. So we're bringing in a guy in August, called Wes Keisha. He's going to be our keynote to start the year next year. Amazing educator. A big part of what he talks about is student engagement. And he started writing a book back in 2016 before the pandemic, where he talked about the engagement crisis. And he's got data from 2016 that even then showed engagement from an early K level and then moving to the middle school and high school level just go down each year. And there was a study that he used that interviewed students and interview teachers. And after the pandemic, I think that's only improved engagement. I think you can layer some interest, you can layer some style, lots of different pieces. But in my mind, this is going to be one of the biggest things But in my mind, this is going to be one of the biggest things that we're going to talk about as educators over the next five years. Engage, engage in our students, especially in the secondary. So as I've read nationally, behavior issues have been an issue in some of these mid-range grades. Just anecdotally, having middle school or myself, I I feel like there is a bit of a looseness in what behaviors allow at that level. Are you confident that's us act like young adults and treat our peers as young adults and treat our teachers as educators? Are our students reflecting that in their day-to-day behavior? I would say, I'd want to go into the data to find out more what the data is saying. So we have more purpose in what, what the behavioral, what does our behavioral data tell us right now? Because I, I don't know exactly what it is. But I would say I haven't seen anything that would tell me that, that behavior is losing. I think some of the information that Julia is going to share from Panorama will gel well with this conversation from an engagement standpoint. And I do think that that connection piece is a big part of this as well.
Ryan, you see these kids, especially in the eighth grade and seventh grade with their I time. Are they using all their minutes or are they getting all their minutes in? Do they see any improvement with their, that I time that they're given 30 minutes a day or whatever? I know some are doing reading, some are doing math, some are related to poll. Do you see any change with that since you added the I time in?
Yeah, it's a great question. So when the middle school is up, I'm asking to speak directly to that. Can we pause that and bring that back when our principals come up?
I got a question, Ryan. You said we could pull this out for each grade level each year. I don't expect you to know this, but could you get that to us to what that eighth grade, current eighth grade, what their numbers looked like last year, looked like last year? Just to see what that.
We can look at their, we can look at their fall to winter and then their fall to spring last year, the current year. That would be pulled out. Moving into math. We're going to start with that first slide and again, the quadrants, again, the goal being we want all of our schools to be in that high performance, high growth quadrant. And you can see that the majority of our schools are up there. And we want, we want to move our schools farther, obviously up with that quadrant. When we break, when we break back down to grade levels, looks a little different than from the school level. Grade five, K eight, seven, really scanned out from that. If you look at those guys, again, the grades that are the highest are the schools that have the most amount of growth. And the schools that are farthest to the right have the highest achievement. So we're going to look at that. Breaking that down into the, how did our, how did our students do in math? From fall to winter, the winter scores are sort of far, farthest to the right. We outachieved Wisconsin significantly than national norm as a K five, or I'm sorry, as K eight. Looking at all of our, our numbers combined, so we're pretty excited with that growth. We saw definitely a decrease in our students that didn't run that, some additional support. And it's good to see us outachieving the national norms even from 18, 19 in the area of math. Notice that is not the trend nationally. And we actually talked about this a year ago, that even as we look at math and we want to make sure that our kids are doing, keeping our achievement up, that there's something happened nationally over and over time. Our national math numbers have not caught up. But as you notice with our Wisconsin numbers and definitely Nelson, we are achieving at the level before and of 18, 19. There's definitely something to celebrate. Again, not spending as much time in the specific grade ranges. Excited to see some things that jump out on this slide. Our kindergarten achievements over the national and just that kindergarten growth in math. Pretty excited to see third grade students, we had started with some in red. There was some good interventions. We were able to shrink that to grow more students into on grade level. Looking at our four through six intermediate, again, highlight is that fifth grade achievement. And also at the sixth grade achievement, we saw some significant growth within our students that were on grade level within those, within those two grades. And then breaking down for the middle, our seventh grade achievement. They just did a heck of a job, just saw some huge growth from the fall to winter within our math scores. We saw some good growth in ongoing level in eighth grade. But
It'll be interesting to see if the board exam report that eighth grade correlates with these. It'll be totally different, skewed numbers, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm going to turn it over to Julie and she's going to share some of the data.
All right. One more slide for the viewing audience at home. All right. So, yeah, round two for us. So these are going to compare our fall survey to the winter survey. I'm going to kind of chalk us through some of the high level data points, just like Ryan had. But it doesn't really dig deep into where our teams went. So again, I'll kind of chalk us through that. First slide, just big picture, all of our schools had administered the survey. This round, we had 3,273 students, classrooms and high school, they give you that into homerooms. Again, we are in good standing. So 73% of our district students are on track to meet their FCL needs for the 22, 23 school year. You're going to see that little arrow, you're going to see that in our high level slides next, but that's just indicating that we went up by one percentage point. Okay. So again, just a reminder, this survey is a perception survey. So it's the student's perception of their own skills. They're rating themselves on their social emotional competency areas and their topic, the topic areas of FCL. And then we also surveyed them on the environments and the support. So that is how they feel in their school, in their classrooms, the relationships, that sort of thing. So we have five answer choices for every question, ranging from percent favorable or most favorable down to least favorable, with that sometimes being in every one of those choices that a lot of our students kind of answer in that, that middle range. So just kind of keep that in mind as we're going through this. So what you're seeing is the topic area broken apart by social emotional skills and then by environmental support. Where our percent favorable is, so that's the first, the highest choice. And then the second highest choice, that's what gets the percent favorable. And then you're going to see the compared to peers nationally. Now this, I just want to take a couple of minutes on. So we have a quick glance of green or orange dots. And this comparison nationally is all schools and students in grades three through 12 that took these topic areas. So this is just three through five, but that percentage point, that percentile point takes into account all of the topic areas from three through 12. It does not take any consideration that K through two, which I'll get to in a couple of slides, because that's not nationally normed, it's the teacher's perception of their own student skills. But for example, just to kind of bring us back to this, the new survey, self-management, that top topic area. For example, one of the questions, just one of the questions in that, in that skill set, in that topic area was during the past 30 days, how often do you follow directions in class? So it's either almost always or frequently, sometimes, once in a while, almost never. So of the 702 students in this winter dataset that were surveyed, 78% of them responded favorably to being able to manage their emotions, thoughts, behaviors in different situations. So that's what that information is kind of telling us at quick glance. Again, that comparative column compared to nationally normed other datasets, that is a big picture comparison. So before we can dig into any of our, our topic areas, because we can, we can dig down really deep, this is just comparing at a high level, three through 12, how other students answered in that area. So it's showing us kind of a real high level, our percent favorable compared to, to others. Now, that color is a quick glance for us to say, okay, we're doing all right or hey, let's dig a little deeper. It doesn't indicate whether it's a big significant issue. It just kind of is a quick glance to have our eyes go somewhere to dig deeper. So for example, if we were to click in self-management, say we had a orange dot, if we were to click in there, we could then look at what we call peer benchmarks. Peer benchmarks are elementary schools compared to other elementary schools, middle schools compared to other middle schools. So it's a little bit more of an accurate picture, so to speak, of what we're comparing. We noticed that when we dig into our data, that those percentiles go way up. So when we compare ninth through 12th grade to other ninth through 12th graders in these topic areas, the percentiles would not be considered in the orange or like at a quick glance of what we might go, ooh, that's something. They went up. So again, keep that in mind as you're kind of reviewing this, because it may not tell an accurate picture for each level. Does that make sense?
Julie, could you touch upon some, some general, what is this mean? I think it's evident for other ones, like for example, sense of belonging and school climate in my mind are potentially, there's a lot overlapping. What's the definition between sense of belonging and school climates? Can you touch upon that a little bit?
Yep. So I have all of the questions in each of those. Do you want three through five in particular?
I think that one's reoccurring, so we just, the general definitions carries forward or perhaps essence.
Yeah, it's how respectful your teachers are of you. If you walked into class upset, how would your teachers respond? It's more about the perception of the environment that they're working in. Feelings about being in school, people being disrespectful towards you, towards peers. How well do you feel like you're understood as a person? Positive or negative energy in the school, it's all kind of perception based, again, on that five points, point scale. There is questions about like the school climate, talks about physical fights, how well you feel kind of connected to adults. So there's, it just kind of varies from topic area. But does that kind of help specifically answer what it looks, what the kids are answering?
Yeah, that's helpful, thanks.
Yeah. And then the FCL topic areas, those are based on castle competencies and then our DPI domains. So DPI took the five castle competencies and then broke them apart into three domains because they felt like they kind of fit in those three areas. So the top ones, the FCL skills are all based on those competency areas. And I have definitions of those that will help you as we kind of continue on here.
I guess then speaker, I'll state those a few now. As I review this company, and I had some questions on, so I'll just wait until we get there.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then a new column that we have for this benchmark is again, at a quick glance, comparing our fall survey data to our winter survey data. So you'll see that on the far right column. Again, those arrows, green and orange are a quick glance indicator as to, huh, let's dig in a little bit and get curious about what we're seeing. But not to think positively or negatively because they do not indicate a significance. They're just kind of a quick glance number. And it just means up one or down one from the fall to the winter. Okay. So overall, big picture, we're still noticing really good things between third and fifth grade with our scores, just like we were at the fall. I'm going to move on to the FCL. So broken apart in the same, you'll see the top has the FCL skills, the bottom has the environments and support. There's one additional topic area and that social perspective taking that was on our first fall survey as well, but they do not norm that in grades three through five. That's why you did not see that on the previous slide. So if we look at social awareness, for example, in the fall, when we first took this, students in grade six through 12 responded 60% favorably in the area of social awareness. So social awareness is looking at how well students consider perspectives of others, how well they empathize, how students respond in different social situations. That's social awareness of the topic area. So that percent was lower, what we thought would be lower based on that little green or, or orange bubble. And then in the current survey, students in grade six through 12 responded the same at that 60%. So you'll notice that in that change column, you'll see zero or a neutral change. And that's what that means. At a quick glance, it looks like there's no movement. But when we click into that competency area, we can see that of all of the questions that were asked, some went up in percentages, some went down, but it evened out to a net zero or a neutral change. And so again, it's just kind of a, we don't know what the story is telling us just by this, this scale, but it's just a high level, high level picture. Additionally, if we go down to the environments and supports, we went down a little bit from the fall to the winter in our teacher-student relationship. So you'll see that it's at 59% in the winter, that was at 61% in the fall. And in the fall, that 61% had a green bubble next to it. So just those two percentage points brought us down again at that national level from grades three to 12 to drop below that, that 20th percentile. But again, if we dig into that information, we can compare those peer benchmarks. And the peer benchmarks look really good compared to other kids their age. So middle schoolers to middle schoolers, high schoolers to high schoolers. That's not what this snapshot is going to tell us. But again, it's our job to dig into that information and to get curious about what's going on there. Sense of belonging again is another example here. So of the almost 1,500 students that we surveyed, this is showing us that 40% of them responded favorably to feeling that they were a valued member of the school community. That's kind of a big picture question. But if we focus on just one of those questions, because remember this topic area has multiple questions underneath it. If we focus on one of those, for example, overall, this is one of the questions. Overall, how much do you feel like you belong at school? So that's a pretty good indication of sense of belonging. Overall, how much do you feel like you belong? 52% of students responded favorably that they either completely belonged or quite a bit belonged. And then if we take that bubble or that middle area of sometimes, that percentage of 52 increases to 78%. So that's a very different story than looking at this snapshot and going, ooh, 40%, what's going on here? Does that make sense?
So taking the bubbles compared to others nationally, so regardless of what responses we received, 80% of the responses nationally were better than our responses. Am I assessing that correctly?
80%.
Because we're in the bottom decile?
Oh, well, it depends on if you're doing peer benchmarks. Because this is saying 40%, of our students compared to a national set of third through 12th graders are responding favorably. So that would be in, in all of the schools and of the students that take this survey, that would be in the bottom.
20%.
20%, it's yes, anywhere. I don't know what that actual percentile is, but zero to 19 is what that data point is showing.
Because, because I recall us having a discussion on this the last time through. And having, I guess, and I don't speak for anyone else here, feel free to chime in, but having some red flags of we're in the bottom 20% in some of these categories. And, and we've fallen further. I guess that's, that's red flag to me. I don't know how else to, I'm not sure to vote it. What are we doing about it?
Yeah, so, and I would, that's why I caution you not to, to look at that dot and thing, red flag, because when we really dig into it, if we take that percentage of how likely do you, do you feel like you belong at school? 50% responded that they do. So that's already better than. So that's already better than the 40% that we see up there. And then if we take that sometimes bubble and we take that into consideration, because we know this is one point in time of all of our students taking the survey. So maybe that day, you know, having a bad day, maybe a rough week, whatever it is, that's their perception of how they're feeling in that moment. And it's very valid and real in that moment. But then we take other points of consideration into account when we follow up with these students, because we can, you know, we know kind of where they fall. How are we going to follow up and support them? And we know that that number is far less than what this percentage is. So when we take, going back to that sometimes, that would increase it to almost 80% of our students feel like they have a sense of belonging, if that sometimes bubble was viewed as not a negative percent, but a percent favorable or positive. We'll talk to building leadership about what we're doing about it, but it feels good knowing that we're getting into the information and reflecting on, this is interesting. What is happening here? Because we don't feel like this in our buildings. That's the beauty and the struggle with, when you ask, there needs to be some sort of a response. And I feel good with the response that our building leadership and our student services and our classroom teachers are having, but it's so new that we're still kind of learning and growing too. But to your question, what are we doing about it? We'll have some points of clarification on that for you, Dave.
Julia, I know the principals are going to share information at each level about how they're addressing both the iReady data and the Panorama data. Can you share a little bit, while we have that question, can you share a little bit about the work that you do with the student services team? And then what, where they go with that?
Sure. So we, student services has had the training on Panorama. We've had multiple professional development opportunities with them to try and understand better what the data is telling us. They have what's called a Panorama playbook in the system. So that is supports for us as schools and teachers, or as schools to kind of help support teachers to respond to the information. So there's strategies, there's classroom lessons. There are just kind of a platform to see what other people are doing in the certain topic areas and competency areas. So we're doing that with the student services team. We also have a social emotional committee. It's like a little work group within our student services team, where we're looking at all of these topic areas and questions and seeing if what we're getting the information on is actually meeting our needs. Some of these topics were our best guess at the time of what areas to assess. Some of the questions we don't necessarily like, social perspective taking as a topic being one of them. It's a very high level topic that the questions themselves, we just don't feel like we're getting accurate answer to from the student perception. So we're going into every one of the questions and every one of the topic areas, and we're talking as a team as to changes, potential changes that might be made. And we do that on a monthly basis, and we're doing it through the end of the year to kind of early evaluate the tool now that we've used it. So it could be topics that change, or it could be questions that change. The key to creating questions that might work better for us, or the problem with that is then that nationally normed set or that kind of comparative information, we wouldn't have. Because there'd be questions that work for us, but that other districts or schools don't use. So we're not there yet, but it's good work that our team is doing. That help, Rich?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go on to the K2. So again, a reminder that K2 is not students taking the survey. It's the teachers' perceptions of the students in their classes. So again, all of, at a quick glance, you'll see that fall to winter changed. All of our competency areas and environments and supports went up. This was a sample set of 655 students that teachers reported on. So for an example, of that connectedness piece, 83% of the teachers responded favorably, or 83% of the students feel, the teachers feel like they're connected to kids in their class and in their grade level. This is where we saw a lot of, like, the most growth out of any of our surveys. We expected to see the growth, because at this level of K2, that's where a lot of these social emotional skills are initially being taught and modeled and practiced. And there is a lot of relationship skills and understanding your own emotions and how to deal with them. And what are these big words like self-management? All of that is being taught through our second step curriculum, our S D L curriculum, and supported with some of our members of student services. So we anticipated this increase just based on the fact that they have more experiences with learning the contents and these skills. All right.
Julia, a question.
Yes.
I know we recently moved to Panorama. Can you put it in some context? When we talked about the iReady for the academic stuff, there are other screeners available and, you know, I'm only assuming there are other S D L screeners that are used. Is Panorama widely used, so that the national data is giant numbers of kids, et cetera? Or is it dozens and dozens of screeners?
There are dozens and dozens of screeners. But that's what I wanted to look at when somebody asked that question of Ryan, because I had the information from Panorama in just the informational pamphlet. But it's thousands of students, hundreds of schools over the nation, and they're growing. So it's a large sample set, it's really good information. I don't know of schools around here that are using it. And there's not a lot of, there's not a ton of districts that are using a tool to evaluate social emotional skills at this point, and just in our, in my network of people and in our districts, they're using information like discipline and office referrals and teacher recommendations and parent recommendations. Like, there's still avenues to evaluating skills and get support for social emotional learning. But nobody that I am aware of in our surrounding districts uses Panorama. I talk about it all the time in my networking meetings, though, because people are looking to take that next step. They just don't know the what. So all that work was done last year before I got here, and the team did a wonderful job taking a variety of tools and narrowing it down to what they thought would be our needs. But it's a good example. Okay. We're going to transition to building leadership coming up and talking specifically about some of the things they're using or they're doing with their data. And then Ryan and I will be here if we have other additional questions to answer, okay?
All right, hello, everybody. In the elementary world in our K3, as far as teaching, learning, and looking at the iReady data, the iReady data is a screener, and it tells us a few things we're always looking at. There are questions every time we take that screener, we look at the results. So we look at how the student's performance has changed between the two diagnostics in the year. So that's going to give us some good information. We look at, in those color bands that you've seen up there, what percentage of students are performing on, below, or above grade level, and who would benefit from supports. And so during, when we look at that data, that gives us one piece of data, as well as classroom data, performance data in the classroom. And then we use something called our win time, and it is what I need. And so that's 30 minutes a day for students, and we can hone in on those specific skills that those students are struggling a little bit more with. And the iReady gives us one piece of that information, as well as classroom performance. So we use that time to help with that. We, when we look at which domains should I prioritize that support? So it gives you a reading score, but it also breaks it down by domains. And so is it phonological awareness, is it phonics, is it vocabulary? Where are the students maybe struggling universally? And so then what can we do universally in our classrooms, as well as, all the way down to the individual student, and what supports are needed there? How are the students progressing towards their growth measures and their grade level proficiency? That's another thing that we use the iReady for, to look at those specific growth targets. And to the question that was asked earlier, so this is a criterion reference test, which means it's grade level standards. So you're scored on those grade level standards in the fall, in the winter, and the spring. So we would hope that our green would keep increasing, because that's getting up to those grade level standards. So that is what the hope is for each of those children and the whole grade level as we're looking at that. So at this point in the year, there's a target growth that iReady has this real fun calculation on how they figure out what a target growth should be for every student. And that target growth doesn't necessarily get them to grade level, but it's definitely making a jump towards grade level. Because if a student is two grade levels behind, they're probably not going to grow to grade level in one diagnostic period, but it's increasing to get them there. So at this point in the year, we would look to make sure that we have 50% or that the median percentage toward that just growth is that 50%, because we're halfway through the year. So that's another one of the measures that we look at as we're going through that information. Using this information, using our PLC time, that's what our PLC time is used for, for the teachers to be able to dig into this data, for the teachers to be able to dig into their common formative assessment data, as well as their classroom data. And that is the time when we can change our instruction to meet those individual needs of students in that win time as well. So questions on any of that teaching and learning piece for K3? All right. When we look at Panorama, in the K3 world, the Panorama data is a little bit differently. As Julia talked about, K2 is the teacher answering questions about a child. So the teacher answers six questions about each individual child. So that's very different than in the older grades where the children are answering about themselves. We know developmentally that it's not appropriate for a five-year-old to think about how they are in their self-management. So we do a lot with our responsive classroom at the K3 level, 4K3 level. And we are really continuing to learn and help each other learn more about the responsive classroom model with the developing relationships, developing the classroom family, and the connection between students. As I learned to earlier, it is in this elementary level where we are teaching children how to self-manage, how to manage their emotions, what to do when you're having a really big emotion, and how to handle that. And so we use that responsive classroom model to help with that, as well as our second step. Our second step is our universal S D L curriculum. And between those two pieces, we are able to help students understand their emotions and then act appropriately on those emotions. The data that we get from Panorama doesn't, it informs our instruction, but it doesn't drive our instruction, because again, it is a screener. But it does help us figure out who is, who is maybe a red flag, because we can get that data all the way down to the individual student, and it helps us figure out our universal needs, as well as figuring out any particular student who might be flying under the radar, but still having some social emotional concerns that we need to help with.
Just one thing, I'll make sure, I think everyone here knows it, but for folks that might be watching at home, Marsha, when she talks about, she's speaking for all of the 4K through 3 schools, not just for the work that goes on at the class.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to go through not only the data, but also the celebrations of our building, what we've been doing at each building level. Do you want to switch any more? Thank you. So the biggest step this year has been through our work and wisdom implementation. We have had the opportunity to really raise the rigor for all students. We are especially focusing on students who have I E Ps. We did a building-wide equity data dig this past summer for the last couple of school years and found that one of our biggest areas for improvement is really, you know, improving growth and learning for our students with I E Ps. So we have seen through scaffolding, through embedding our instructional coach in our grade level ELA teams as well, and having time to collaboratively plan for variability through U D L, or Universal Design for Learning, or to meet the needs of all students. So that has been a huge celebration. And as you've seen, we have had tremendous growth in all grades through our ELA, through ELA curriculum. We also have an expansion of Opportunity Hour supports for both math and ELA. So we're very fortunate. We serve about 50 students every morning before school through a homework club where we partner with the high school. And our high school tutors work with our students who, it's a twofold priority based on students who need homework support as well as mentorship. We've seen huge growth in that, as well as confidence built amongst our students. We have about 30 kiddos there, with our students being around 20 each morning. And then we also have seven different intervention groups. We have four reading intervention groups and three math intervention groups, where we utilize our teachers with expertise, as well as some of our interns, to run math and reading interventions. We have a continued focus on responsive classroom practices. So, sorry, I'm skipping to ELA. Oh, we did modify this a little bit, but that's okay. So as well as our academic, I want to touch on our S D L. So we have a continued response, our continued focus on responsive classroom practices, as well as second step implementation. So that includes things such as morning meetings, interactive modeling. We have meet time, which is kind of that more calming time when coming in from transitions, such as like lunch or recess. We also did a school-wide book study with several different responsive classrooms. We had nine different book study groups. We actually today just had our support staff presentation, and we had where the teams were allowed to choose how they demonstrated their learning, much like we want for our kiddos to do in the classroom. So they could choose how they presented. So we had a culminating activity today for our support staff, who read a book about like the 10 common misbehaviors. And we had our support staff do share their learning through changing the lyrics to Ice Ice Baby to empathy, like that. We had the Brady Bunch theme song, and just a lot of poems being read. And it was just a great way to not only share our learning with others, but also celebrate all of the wonderful learning that our teams have done. We also have our second step implementation, which is fully amazing. This is now in our third year of like the new digital format for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And a lot of our teachers are, you know, building that in throughout our morning meeting time, as well as having like our main lesson typically like one day a week. We use a, we had an improvement for all of our S D L interventions and supports. And so it's really nice, because this year we've had so much rich data to really reflect on. So for instance, not only the Panorama that Julia's been sharing them, we also take a look at other data points. Our student services team is incredible, and they look at, you know, attendance, office referrals, office visits, the teacher ratings on like the social competencies for the report card. And then we've included some new groups this year, which is phenomenal. So like we have cognitive behavior therapy groups, which is like psychotherapy or talk therapy that is looking at maybe some unhealthy patterns of thinking, and then learning, you know, learning how to interrupt those thoughts, learning new problem-solving skills for coping. And then we also have dialectical behavior therapy groups as well, where that is working with students who have maybe said, learning how to accept very difficult feelings, learning the skills to like work through those big feelings, as well as, you know, providing them with agency to be proactive and making more positive changes in their life. And then just to touch on to the sense of belonging data point that I heard about earlier, not that I'm here, but we took and printed out each student that reported they did not feel a sense of belonging. We printed that out, and we provided those students to their home room teachers. And our student services team met with each of those home room teachers about those students. So they were aware of what students were reporting, like they didn't feel that sense of belonging. And then coming up with strategies on ways to increase that sense of belonging. So our student services So our Student Services team is offering like lunch buddies, where they have groups together for kiddos to maybe help them feel more connected to their peers. We also shared during professional development, different strategies for teachers to use based on the Panorama playbook, and we saw some really great growth in our Panorama sort of the data in that way. What questions do you have?
I think your enthusiasm for all of this, it flows through SIR and the relative scores shown on the SCL data, the IREDDI seem to reflect your enthusiasm, so.
Oh gosh, no, it's the team, but you're too kind. Definitely the team.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. What other questions do you have? Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Good evening. So for Teaching and Learning from the Middle School, I've heard me several times talking about our I-time work, and so that's the result from our I-ready results. We just finished rotation three from our I-time grouping to kind of connect back to the questions Shelley had asked as far as what results we're seeing. If I just pull up our quick math and reading data from fall to winter, just a quick celebration from each of those. For instance, in the area of math in our building, there had been 82 students in the fall who were mid or above grade level, and at the mid-year, there were 127 students. So again, from 82 to 100 students, and that's both grade level combined in the area of math. And then reading, from 121 students that were above grade level to 153 students. So if we talk about progressing through the year and where we are in relation to meeting those grade level standards, that would make sense, but we're also seeing that in our data as well. We had built in those celebrations that I've talked about here at the monthly reports before. The first one of the year was approximately 70 students who met the celebration criteria, and rotation two and rotation three were 150 to 175 kids who met those celebration pieces. So that means minimum of 10 lessons passed and a minimum of three hours on I-Ready in that five-week rotation. So students are expected to be working on I-HEP twice a week, and then small group instruction lessons, two days a week as well. So really four days a week dedicated during that I-time portion in the student sector. So that is paying off for us. When we make the instructional groupings, the lowest entry point in the area of reading is vocabulary, the lowest entry point in the area of math is numbers and operations, and we had significantly less groups in those focused areas this time. So we talk, we go from the lowest skill level, building up to that more rigorous skill level, and we have many more kids in our enriched reading or enriched math groups, which means that they have really tested out of that section of I-Ready that applies mostly to our eighth-grade students, sometimes our seventh-grade students. Other things that I put up there in Teaching and Learning is our WICAR strategies, and again, that's connected to AVID. So WICAR, as a reminder, stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. And so teachers have the expectation that they're using WICAR strategies within their classes. It's really part of our walkthrough feedback, and we talk a lot about, in a 15-minute walkthrough, we likely will not see all five components, but if we were to follow the lesson throughout, we should be seeing a combination of some of those strategies so that our students are collaborating, our students are able to really have that thinking part when it comes back to the improvement. So to us, that's an important part of teaching and learning. And then Cassie touched on this a little bit, but our WIC and Wisdom implementation is really just, we're seeing just a huge difference in our ELA classrooms with the types of conversations students are having. Discourse is an important piece of the learning process, and that's really setting students up to kind of level the playing field when it comes to an academic discussion in class with the different scaffolds that are in place through the curriculum. So it's like every kid has a seat at the table instead of if you are a freestyle of reader, in the past, maybe you were more likely to be successful than your classmates, but now with the scaffolds in place, it really does feel like we're leveling the playing field and everyone can participate in a discussion and experience discourse within the classroom. As far as relationships, climate, and culture, our fall data for our Panorama, we really focused on sense of belonging for our focus area, and that's kind of what we embraced throughout this year. So it just kind of made four little nuggets of talking points here. So the first is the connectedness portion of the Panorama screener showed us that 36 students in the fall were not connected. And then when we did a January like midpoint checking with those students, there were six students who are still not connected, but 30 of the 36 indicating that they're connected. Some of the things that we feel contribute to that, one of the things that we do when we have our list of students, we have a document, and it's actually a paper copy document, and there are four questions on it. So we put the student picture, we put our mission and vision on the top of that. We talk about our goal is for all kids to be connected. And then the four questions are, what do we know about the student's interests? What do we know about their friends and family? What do we know about them as a learner, and who have we collaborated with? That could be the Northside teachers, it could be other people in the building, sports or activities they're involved in. And then who may be a good connection? So it might be that this kid really loves fishing, and Mr. So-and-so loves fishing, and maybe that's the connection. So we actually do kind of a gallery walk with those documents. So anyone who teaches seventh grade, any students who are seventh graders, those papers are laid out, and we just go from sheet to sheet to add information. What we do with that then is between our Student Services team, Joe and Crystal, and then Mr. Yachir and myself, we meet with each of those students, share what the teachers or the adults in the building have said, make sure it's accurate, first of all. Sometimes the things that we put down in the paper is not accurate, and then look at that connection piece and say, you know, is there anything we haven't thought of? What we find more often than not is the term connectedness can be confusing to kids. So for instance, I start, you know, talking about, the reason you're here is because you indicated you were not connected. Do you feel like there's any change in that? And sometimes it's like, what does it mean to be connected? Right question. And then I simplify by saying, if something really good or really overwhelming was happening in your life, is there an adult you could go to in our building? Well, maybe, and then they name five adults, and then they keep going. So it's like, well, you probably are connected, but that vocabulary term is a little bit different. I think within Panorama, sometimes what also becomes confusing for the students is the vocabulary piece, and this is just us navigating some pieces with students. So for instance, one of the questions within WIC, within school climate, is how fair or unfair are the rules for the students at this school? So the choices are very unfair, somewhat unfair, slightly unfair, neither fair nor unfair, slightly fair, somewhat fair, very fair. Well, anyone who answers neither fair or unfair, it's kind of like basically counts against us when they have kind of a neutral answer. I also think about when students look at this, and if vocabulary is a struggle for some of our students, what is the difference between somewhat unfair or slightly unfair? Could we quantify that as adults if we're trying to explain what that piece means? So part of this is just kind of working with kids and educating, you know, also looking at it like as things progress. If the very unfair is on the far left, slightly must be a little bit more than that, and then slightly unfair, a little bit more than that piece. So in addition to that fall group, you see up on the slide is huddle groups, and I think I mentioned this previously, but just as a reminder, within Panorama, there's a group of students who actually flag as having no skills, which that's a Panorama term. I strongly dislike that label because our kids have skills. Maybe didn't indicate some of these areas here, but that would mean that in areas of self-management, social awareness, social perspective, and emotional regulation, that those were all unfavorable answers. So we had 33, excuse, yes, 33 students who had indicated, or who their results indicated that they had no skills. So we did huddle groups, which was a morning, 7:30 to 10:30, and Joe, Crystal, Mr. Yachir, and Mrs. Orr and myself ran groups where the kids took five rotations and had a focus in each of those four areas, and then we added confidence. Because when we looked at the names on the paper, confidence is something that we were able to kind of attach, as these students really weren't kids who we see as confident learners or confident classmates. And so within that, we went over some of the questions within each of our areas. So I had a self-management group, and even the discussion with kids who were like, well, if it's asking about teachers and it says some, and we have 10 adults we see within the day, is that three or four? Is that five or six? And so we just kind of had some conversations about, what does that look like across your day, and how can we help to increase those answers so that you feel more connected, and then you have these skills of self-management, social awareness, social perspective, and emotional regulation? We'll repeat actually that same process with our winter information at our Wednesday staff meeting. And then kind of the last two parts of this is, we had our staff bring their class rosters, and we looked at the students, we looked each category by definition, and then talked about, put down three students in each of the categories who you would say are lagging in those areas. So for instance, self-management, who are three students from this roster who are lagging in an area? And then went into the playbook, which is part of Panorama, and were able to, like, what's a strategy you can apply in the next week? What's a strategy you can apply in the next month? And typically, like anything, if you can apply it to three students, you can apply it to many more students than that. So that was one other response to the data. And then the final thing is more office-based, but we talk about, when we talk about student behavior, some of the important questions that we ask is like, how did this choice impact you? How did this choice impact those around you? And how did this choice impact the learning environment? And really being able to think of that self-awareness piece, and if we are not managing ourselves, or if we don't have the social awareness, then that social perspective of my behavior is impacting my peers and is impacting the overall classroom experience. So most focus at the middle school though is under that pillar of sense of belonging and hoping that all of our kids are connected to at least one adult. And we go back to one adult at home and one adult at school, and that should be the wrapper arms around our kids to be able to provide support both in our school. Questions?
So I know the data here is 6 through 12, so it bridges the middle school and the high school, but some of the things that you just outline, will they then start producing more visible results relative to our peers and our next go-round of this test, or when will that start specifically social climate, sense of belonging? When will that specifically start to show on these results? Because again, all of that is good, but if we're still in the 20%, 20% us moving relative to our peers, I think it's overarching all of this.
I wish I had a magic answer for that. I think that both with I-Ready, Panorama, when we get to Wisconsin forward, you know, there are kids who choose to rush and choose to not read questions and click answers. So that's going to be a component of each of these pieces. But overall, I would hope each time we keep making improvements. We're not from one screener to the next, going to have a, likely a magic large jump, but if we keep moving in the right direction, that should be paying off over time.
I have a question, Tara. It's a bit of a comment, and I'll try and throw a question angle to it, and it doesn't necessarily pertain just to you at the middle school. I'm wondering, as we're starting to measure all of these kids' engagement and connectedness and sense of belongings and stuff, viewed through the lens of Milton, we ask our kids to go from an elementary to an intermediate to a middle school to a high school. That's not the same in every community, of course. So are we seeing a kid, and I'm going to very generalize it here, are we seeing a kid that's really connected at sixth grade, but we ask him to change buildings and change all the adults that he interacts with? Are we seeing a kid that we considered connected, but all of a sudden now is maybe less connected? Or do you, in another vein, do you reach back to the previous year, if it's a different building, for example, to see what that kid performed like in that environment and try and, you know, assimilate some of what was going well, going good, making them feel engaged? If that's not the case, succeeding grade levels, that was probably way more complex than.
No, I understand. So I can only speak to the transition from Northside to middle school, and then middle school to high school, but we have the end of the year meeting, and then a beginning of the year, more formal meeting of student names who, we want to know the package of this student, but we also want to give everybody a fresh start. So who should be on our radar for something that maybe is, don't give it time to figure that out, we need to know this information, or who needs something in place like day one? So we did the same thing with the high school staff. We had a list of students that our office staff just kind of puts together, and then in August, we meet and talk about that group of students and what is the need to know information, not the, we can talk about this once you put a name to a face, but these are some things that really are important along the way. I do think though, the transition from Northside to middle school is pretty significant because for the most part, our sixth graders have two main adults throughout the day. And there's other people that they see, but then when they come to the middle school, they have several adults, several transitions, and it's not the same, you know, my one or two teachers with my same 25 classmates know me really well, and they figured out how to do school together. Instead, there's nine different locations throughout the building. If they're not in that inquiry, and if they don't have some sort of intervention, then it could be 10, 11, or 12 locations. So I do think that naturally, if that same situation was happening in a different community, I think that would apply there as well. Your sense of belonging, when you have the same group of kids with the same two adults, just naturally be interesting.
Principal, Bill Horn is back from the town hall meeting tonight. He went and shared, he and his students, he went and shared some information on referendum with the town hall meeting. So Ryan, do you want to walk through the high school and slide, and Jeff, if you can help answer any questions and come up on high school's level?
Absolutely. I will be best again to the ACT prep and support. I talked a little bit with Jeremy about it this last week, but I asked Jeff if he'd want to come up and speak and address the sense of belonging at the middle high school. He'd be in a great position to be so. While we shared the data before in I-Ready, obviously it was a K8 data, and for some time at the high school, we talked about screeners and how best to get another gauge of where our kids are at. We're always looking at performance, we're looking at the ACT. We still have a full social level at the high school. We look at the other ages, we look at attendance, and a lot of our screeners tended to top out right around algebra, or right around the ninth grade year, where lots of high schools have struggled with that over the years about finding a good quality screener, just to give us another bit of information. Last year, we came across Chalk Talk. Chalk Talk is a relatively newer screener. What really appealed to us about Chalk Talk was that it uses ACT-style questions and retired ACT questions to build their questions. And as part of that, then it gives our students a current score and then a predicted score as well. Actually, we take our 1911 students take Chalk Talk, give them quality, it's timber, they can get in the winter just to see their growth, all in a way of kind of getting us ready to take that ACT, which we just did, so the week ago. So with Chalk Talk, it does a really good job of letting students know where they're at individually within that predicted score and within that current level, and it breaks it down into the self-skills within the ACT, and then gives kind of a personalized pathway, if you will, that our students can do specific practice in the areas that they need to do a little more work in, because it breaks down math, it breaks down ELA, and then as our classroom teachers look at where those students score, they have students work in their little areas, and there's anything they want to improve from. We do that a couple of different ways. So our core teachers are using Chalk Talk as part of their instruction, but also then we're using a flex time as well. Flex time is used for, this is kind of all the tougher of things, and Chalk Talk is one of the things that we really use that flex time for. One thing we don't have as far as the Chalk Talk reports is that big grade level report or big kind of school level report, Chalk Talk is relatively new, and their major focus is on growing the students' individual scores. So we're not able to produce some of the visuals that an I-Ready or a Panorama might give us. So any type... So anytime we want to look at like full grade level data, that's us having to put lots of canned written data into a spreadsheet in order to try to look at some larger percentages. So we have been able to use it like that. But we have been able to use it more from a classroom standpoint. So our teacher can get a really good piece there. I know there's a structural leadership team at the high school. They have lots of core teachers that have really kind of taken the reins with Chalk Talk and really increased the volume across with the staff. I know students still love doing additional testing per se. But from what we heard from our current juniors, they felt more ready. Or that, I guess I can't go off by more ready. But from what we heard is that they felt ready to take in the test this year. I would attribute a good part of that to lots of the conversations that the students had with the staff all year using those Chalk Talk and these ACT-style questions. Some of the other work that we've been doing this year at the high school, the TLC, has really been diving in to make sure that we are embedded in ACT-style language and questions across the curriculum in all that we do. We've done some conversations as a full staff around rigor. What does that mean? And how do we ensure that we have rigor across all of our classes and all of our electives as well? So really, we've kind of challenged especially those classes that touch all students, those classes that all of our kids at Milton must take in order to graduate. How do we ensure that those classes are fully rigor and are changed to all kids? And we're moving them academically. So we've been having some really good conversations about that over the course of the year. And within that, Tara talked a little bit about add strategies as we're looking at rigor, how we infuse in those engagement strategies within our courses as well. So in the summer, when we had our presentation, we talked about our school report card and how Milton is the highest achievement school from just a score standpoint in Rock County. What it brought us down on the last report card is that goes in looking at our lowest score and 25% of the kids, and we look, we have that gap. The high school has done a lot of work really trying to identify, okay, who are those, who are those 25% of kids that are at that lowest performance core level within our school? And then identifying some interventions for those students, especially prior to the ACT and digging down to make sure those kids are being successful within their classroom. So we delegated previous data around four. We delegated the previous data on pre-ACT in order to dig into those lists a bit and build in some interventions into that flex time as well. I'm not sure what we had on that future reference, please. So I'll have to check in with you on that one bullet point. But invite Jeff to come up and talk about how to address the sense of belonging.
Okay. So when we look at sense of belonging, you identified pretty early that high school kids, that age group identifies belonging a lot with how active they are within the school community, clubs, activities, sports. So a lot of what these bullet points here are kind of things that my office have got to try and improve that data. Basically, and I could talk on some of those points. So if you're looking at, I'll start on two, like data from fall to winter athletics. I stood here two years ago when I started in the middle of COVID and we had our participation plummeted, right? Really, really, really badly. And I had a goal then that we were going to get our participation numbers back to pre-COVID numbers. And I can say that pretty proudly this year, so 23, 2023, our numbers exceeded that of 2019. So our last year prior to COVID, which was a huge goal in ours. So I think when it comes to connectedness at the high school with the concept of my office COVID, we're still feeling the effects of the disconnectedness of those kids. Coming back into the building and re-assimilating into clubs and activities and doing those things. So we've done a lot of work from an athletic standpoint with our coaches to build numbers, to build participation, to actively be conscious of doing that. Some things that have allowed us to do that, it's a point of emphasis when I have my coaches' evaluations and their continued professional application that we do annually. There's been an increased collaboration between myself and the activity department at the middle school, which I think has paid dividends as, sorry about that transition socially, but there's also a transition athletically through activities as well that is pretty critical. And one thing when we look at activities, we remove the athletics side. I think it's really easy to track data participation in athletics if you have separate rosters. So I came in, we tried to start looking at how participation has been affected with activities and clubs, but the one, it's kind of hard to define those things. And then we found that there's not a lot of hard data on rosters or the amount of kids that actually participated over those years. So one of our points of emphasis starting last year was to get solid rosters and solid data on the number of kids that are participating so we can then track that over time. So we've kind of been the infancy of that process. What we found is what we need to do with activities and clubs is be really reactive to the needs and wants of kids. If that is changing, so we see some clubs that are kind of establishing themselves and growing like crazy. I'm going to throw a fishing club up. There's this incredible activity that has grown tremendously in two years. So we need to be responsive and put resources into those clubs and those activities. Conversely, you know, we have some activities that really took a hit during COVID and never really recovered. And maybe those things aren't really what kids are wanting or needing anymore. So being really kind of responsive to the wants and needs of kids moving forward is very important. Keep them involved. On top of that, we spend a lot of time communicating with kids, especially the eighth graders, as they come up. There's multiple occasions where we have presentations on athletics and activities. There's three or four as they transition to the high school. I talked with Mr. Lewinsky probably three weeks ago about establishing a couple of days where our coaches and our activity advisors who are in both the middle school, get to those kids a little earlier and try to get them to follow from the front end. But I mean, that's kind of where we're going with the two bullet points that Mr. Bill Horn put up there. Point number three emphasis on restored practices. Mr. Kleinship, AP at the high school, is kind of a restored practices guy. We've done a lot of work as a team as far as discipline goes to incorporate restored practices. A lot of that goes a very long way in developing relationships with kids, especially in R and as administrators. I can't really go completely in depth on that or what Mr. Bill Horn was going to speak on that. And future efforts too. I don't know what Jeff was going to say. But those two data points, that's big into kind of what I've been doing and kind of my goals in my office in the last couple of years.
Jeff, do you get a lot of requests from students looking to start new clubs or activities?
Yeah, we do. And there's a process to growing that. You know, part of it is we want to make sure the new clubs, new activities are viable and will be supported, you know, so that the kids are, they can be pretty quirky sometimes. You can always start this club and then three weeks later, they forgot that they came to talk to you about it. Right? So there's a process that we go through with kids and potential advisors or coaches to examine like the viability of the club. And then there's kind of a probationary period before we say, you know, hey, this club's established. We gave, you know, participants, we have really active adults that are supporting it. And then we'll kind of grow from there. But yeah, we do, we get some and some kind of take hold and some who don't. Some of the ones that you wouldn't expect or I don't really know about, kids really love. And that kind of goes back to that being responsive to what they want.
Are the kids made aware of the fact that they can start a new club if they're
Yep. We have kids come in, they come to my office, have a meeting and we'll have that discussion. So I probably get four or five a year. It's like my second, I've been here two years. I probably get four or five a year of kids that want to establish something or we're going on that process.
Anything else for Jeff or Ryan?
Oh, do you have any input into this? Like you're the student. I want to know your connectedness or what you see or don't see in the schools or the clubs and activities that are there.
I would have to agree. I would say that the kids that are in more clubs obviously seem to feel more connected. So it's just more of trying to get more kids to participate in those clubs. And I know student council is thinking of next year, starting to put like up announcements of a new club weekly, just to try to get exposure to new clubs and see if that makes a difference.
I like that wall of they still are using it like outside the office or something. So I think that's good. I didn't realize all the things that were there until you actually look at them. I don't know if that's been updated, but you know.
Anything you think they could do better?
Um, no, I think honestly, there are just so many clubs. And I know that coming in, I didn't know about the vast majority of them. So I think it's just trying to get out all of the different clubs.
And proud to be able to meet that.
Good to know. I can't remember, does the high school do a night like that? I know some high schools do that where they tables up
Yes, we do.
In the year, whatever.
Yeah, we have two events in which we have like the activities and athletics fair, which reaches a lot of kids. But again, I'm kind of of that opinion that earlier we can get to them and we can plant those seeds. Like you said, not every kid's going to go to, you know, back to school night or open house and things like that. So if we can get to the kids in the middle school during their lunches, we're just trying to be more proactive in communicating and educating our kids that are coming up and what activities we have to offer.
Anyone else? Otherwise, thank you, folks. It was incredibly informative. All right, Rich, we bypassed you of sorts. So we had tackled all of our agenda that did not involve you directly. So we'll back up a step to the superintendent update. Do you want to start with your red hot highlights?
Yeah, some things that I really want to highlight. I apologize for being late. I was at the Town of Milton board meeting tonight sharing referendum information with that group. A couple of things to highlight on the red hot highlights in the arts. March is youth art month. And our art teachers, Mr. Calvert, Mrs. McDole, and Scott, selected nine students to have their art displayed in the Youth Art Month Regional Show in Madison in February. And their pieces are currently on display in the state show at East Town Mall in Madison through March 31st. So those students are at Milton East, third grader Keaton K., second grader Brooklyn G., and second grader Ryan S. At Harmony and Consolidated, third grader Joey, excuse me, Zoe D., third grader Isaac K., and third grader Lily S. And in Milton West, third grader Cora B., second grader Trinity E., and second grader Kayden S. So congratulations to those students for being chosen to have their artwork displayed in Madison. We also have our district art show opening up at the Milton Public Library on Tuesday, March 14th. So that will open up tomorrow. It showcases the work of our amazing artists from kindergarten through 12th grade. And that exhibit is open during regular library hours at the Milton Public Library. And it goes through April 23rd when they have a special closing reception. We had a high school student, junior Tyler Burkhart, who was one of 64 students across the nation to be selected to attend this summer's National Association of the Deaf Youth Leadership Camp. There are thousands of students across the country, across the country that apply for this opportunity. It includes a video application, is a highly competitive application process. So congratulations to Tyler to be chosen to take part in that. And that camp is a four-week-long educational summer program. It's for deaf and hard-of-care high school students looking to develop their scholarship, leadership, and citizenship skills. So it's quite an honor for Tyler. And then also congratulations to Milton High School junior Parker Luther and freshman Katie DeRimer. And both are members of the national, or excuse me, of the Milton High School Archery Club. And both were selected to the National USA Archery 2023 Elite U-18 Program. So that program supports youth athletes seeking to become internationally competitive in archery and outstanding achievements for our two Red Hogs to be advanced to that national level. So those were some things that I wanted to highlight today.
All right. Questions for Rich on any of the highlights? Otherwise, we'll stay with you for your referendum update of sorts.
Yeah, the referendum update is kind of a continuation of what we talked about at the last board meeting that we are still hosting and going out to different groups to share information about the referendum. It becomes more and more important for us to get accurate information out because we do hear some, some inaccurate information that's out there. And it's important for us to make sure we're getting accurate information out both about the referendum and about the conditions across the state leading to the referendum. April 4th is election day. So this is our last regular school board meeting prior to the referendum. So we encourage people to gather information, to attend information sessions, to ask questions if they have questions, and to get out and vote.
All right. Any other questions for Rich for the superintendent update? Then we have one agenda item left, Rich, was the only one we couldn't get to with you being gone, is the item D on our new business is settlement of the vaping lawsuit. So obviously, there are some things like that that we can't get into. But if you want to give a quick synopsis of where we've been and where we're at?
Yeah, absolutely. And Joe, you're exactly right. There are some things that we can't get into publicly because the settlement is confidential. So we aren't able to publicly share the details of the settlement, but I do want to talk a little bit about what led up to it. There was a nationwide class action suit with vaping manufacturers and school districts and municipalities across the country who joined that class action suit because of the cost and resources incurred by those groups, whether it's school districts or municipalities, to combat the trend of youth vaping. And so that, one of the vaping manufacturers has reached a settlement with that group. And there are financial amounts that are going out to each of those groups based on a few different criteria. What the school board will need to do tonight is if we want to, I guess the options that we have are to not accept the terms of the settlement. And if we don't accept the terms of the settlement, then we could continue on to, with that lawsuit on our own against the vaping manufacturers. I would strongly recommend that we not do that. We don't have the time or the resources that it would take to continue that. And there wouldn't be any assurances of any payoff down the road. The other option is to approve the vaping settlement as presented. And the board, because of the confidential nature, the board has been given the information, but we aren't allowed to share the amount of the settlement or the terms of the settlement in public.
Rich, did you say there might be more payment awarded from different manufacturers?
There, that is a possibility, yes. So this is with one of the manufacturers. So there may be something that we bring back to a future board meeting.
So Rich, we can make the motion on this in public session despite the fact that the terms are not public. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I would move to approve the vaping settlement as presented. Second.
Thank you. Dave's motion, and seconded by John, to approve the vaping settlement as presented, has been properly offered. Are there any discussion? All in favor of approval? Signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. And if I haven't missed anything, because we hopscotched all over the agenda, I think we've gotten drawn with except meeting dates.
Meeting dates. We have a couple upcoming meeting dates. We've had a lot of meetings in the last few weeks, so it's not as extensive a risk. We have, as we shared earlier, no more school board meetings in March. So our next board meeting will be April 10th at the 6:30 here at District Office. We have a rescheduled HR committee meeting coming up on Wednesday of this week. No, excuse me, Thursday of this week at 3:15 in the first floor office. We have a first floor conference room here at District Office. Again, that's an HR committee meeting. We have an upcoming community information session that if some board members are attending, we will post that as a meeting because we may have some board members there. That's on March 20th at 1:00 PM. Also a week from today, 1:00 PM at the gathering place. So if board members are interested in attending that, you can go there to attend. We have another joint HR and finance committee meeting on April 5th. The time is to be determined, but I think we finalized that today. Is that all official now coverage? So that is officially at from 8:00 to 10:00 PM on April 5th. It's a joint HR and finance committee meeting. And then again, that next school board meeting on April 10th.
Rich, what time was the March 20th?
Rich, what time was the March twentieth gathering?
March twentieth is at one P M.
Okay. I can probably make that. The finance committee meeting was from eight to tens. Can I make up that?
Yes, the joint HR and finance committee.
All right, are we good on?
Yes.
And with that, I move with you. Did I give a second? I didn't hear him. We'll go to Rick and Jennifer. How was that? All in favor of a journey for the evening?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you very much.